Let's go. Oh, yeah.
First off, does everybody know we lost a long time member of our community, a long time member of the planning board, that I slated. We could just have a moment of silence to contribute to that. This time I'd like to open the floor. If anybody wants to make any comments about that.
I'd like to take that opportunity. It's been a rough one for me. As y'all probably don't know, or I don't know if you know, I wanted to ask Al to join this planning board when it started getting into real technical stuff. And the reason I did that because obviously with his technical expertise and I think he more than proved that with the documentation he brought to us, the technical reviews he did, the engineers that he brought in, the experts, I mean, he did a very thorough job, I felt like. And I guess, you know, that was one thing, but I guess what really kind of hit me hard was I basically asked him to give up the majority of two years of his retirement, the fourth year, which is county and community, and that was kind of hard. Now he has departed from this strange world, a little ahead of me, means nothing. People like us who believe in physics, know that the distinction between past, present, and future is only a discovery, persistent illusion. Albert Einstein said that, and it kind of spoke to me. I felt like that says something about Al and kind of the way I feel about him. But, you know, the big question about Al Slavel is, well, how in the hell did he do it? I mean, I can't tell you the times that we sat at Rainbow Springs and had that conversation, both of us, why in the world are you doing this? And I've had to go back and dig through some books that I've read over the years, and there's quotes in it that kind of explains some of this, and I'd like to read some of them to you now. First one is from John Marston, "A Killing Cross." "I'm a person of the mountains and the open paddocks and the big empty sky. That's me. I knew that if I spent too long away from all that, I'd die. I don't know what of, I just knew I'd die." I think that's Al Slavel. Another one is Thomas Wolfe, "Look Over the Angel." "These mountains, they're his master. They rend in life, they were the cup of reality beyond growth, beyond struggle and death. They were his absolute unity in the midst of an eternal change." And another one that really, I pulled several quotes from him, is Edward Abbe. And I had to really dig back far, and 1974, E.J. Whitmire named my first Edward Abbe book. I think it was either, that is, something like that, he's really a great author. He's probably better known for the Monkey Reach game, but some of the things that really made me think about, society is like a skew. If you don't stir it up every once in a while, then a layer of scum floats to the top. Was that not saying what Al Slavel? Another one from Edward Abbe, "The fear of death follows from the fear of life. A man who lives fully is prepared to die at any time." I think that's Mr. Slavel again. And here's one that took a little while, but I finally found it. "I stand for what I stand on." He stood on these mountains, and that's what he really stood for. "When a man must be afraid to drink freely from his country's rivers and streams, that country is no longer fit for living." And I can't tell you the times I enjoyed fishing with Al on Rainbow Springs and several other rivers, and I always treasure that. "In the times of crisis, I was not hurt by harsh words of my enemies, but by the silence of my friends." Queen Shakespeare said that. Boy, I felt that in myself, and I know Al did too, but we kept on going. And, you know, I guess really what I wanted to drive home about Al, and there's, we came here from these mountains. I mean, our ancestors were here a long time ago, and there's certain parts of these mountains get in your blood, you can't get them out. I mean, I don't care how long I've been gone, when I top Cowie Mountain and look down that valley, it just a peace comes over me. I'm home, this is where I belong. And there one time Al and I were talking at Rainbow Springs, and he said, he's talking about, he said he could identify with the Viet Cong because they basically had nowhere to go, they were home, so they had to fight. And so that's the kind of way I feel about these mountains. I feel like I want to go, but I don't want to go, so I think I need to stand up for them. But those values that were instilled in us from previous generations, it's out of the genetics of what it is, but it's not going to pass. I know three young generations, it's not the same values, and there's two young slave owners that's got same values, but they're not alone. There's lesbies, there's teens, there's calls, I can't just keep naming them wrong. So we're always going to be here, and that'll carry on. And I'm really encouraged with the young generation I see now, Matt Baikman did a real nice thing as well, that board real good. And, you know, there's another long generation, and you're certainly not going anywhere. So with that, I'd just like to close with a separate fire, my friend.
Mike, can you hear me well?
I'm going to try. Just let me see. Sorry. Al Slavel, maybe I can't. Al Slavel was a confident, knowledgeable, experienced, intelligent man. And he brought those qualities to the planning board and everything else he did. He also was motivated by really unselfish ideals. He knew the history, the culture, the geography, geology, and hydrology of these mountain lands, the beauty and the value. And believed that human use could honor that. Al had a quiet, natural strength. There was never any posturing. His integrity led him to stand up for what he knew was right, no matter how hard. I wasn't fortunate enough to know Al as long as somebody like Louis, but I am fortunate in that he and I got to be really close. In the last two years, I've probably spent more time with Al Slavel than almost anybody else. He could seem to be pretty crusty or even cranky.
Really?
But he was a generous, caring man who was always helping people. He was funny, and he was great company. Whether you were digging ramps or sitting by the river at Rainbow Springs, it wasn't a better decision.
Everybody else? Okay. Does everybody have a chance to review the mentions last week? So, everyone's ready? Tommy, Mark, Paul, Ford, you see who knows? Close?
He told me he was kind of, he had to get a silver for something today. And it was coming back across.
That's what y'all get the hollers there, isn't it?
Actually, I came down today, and, well, I only had to wait 10 minutes, so it's pretty good. Yeah, they're closing it down next week, I believe, that's what I read, about a week or 10 days.
I'm looking at part of Spain on Main Street Avenue.
Yeah, it will be.
Do you have anyone who's supposed to like to speak for us? I'd like to recognize, Professor Hayden, appreciate you being here, taking the time to be here. We have Mr. Judd team with us tonight. Out of respect for, for his time, we'll kind of change things around, let him go ahead and speak, and we'll finish up your day.
Jim and Derek and I, over the last two or three years, have ran into issues, primarily with road standards or road issues that need to be addressed, already discussed. If you will look at, let me see where I, the third page, I'm sorry, the fourth page of the handout we had last time. I'm sorry. I just gave it to you before we come to here.
This page here?
Yeah, the fourth page of that, right there. It says additional language to be added. And the turning radius is underneath that. Some of the things we ran into, this was mostly dealing with fire apparatus, the width of roads, turnouts were insufficient, there was no way to turn fire apparatus around once we got in the road. Some of the switchbacks we ran into were issues, pullouts, road gates, bridges. Jim and I talked several times, and back when Derek was county planner, him and Derek created a lot of this on their own. And that's where we're at. You going to leave this place now, or you?
Well, not, pretty much is that I gave it up.
If you were looking under your orange tab, design standards, there's a handout, it's a one through seven. Looks like this. It's got a pin to the other fire code on the back.
This is a list that he came up with, and this will be two or three right now. Pretty much what I think is that, is that when they bring us a plaque, that some of this stuff already needs to be on it because we're going to look at the plaques, and we're going to turn them down if they don't have these turnouts. That's what I even know something to begin with. And the fire code is actually a council ordinance in hand. And what it says is that you gotta have 20-foot roads over, you know, if you have more than two buildings on that road. But they leave it up to me to, you know, make any kind of different arrangements or whatever.
Indeed, and I think on the first one there is the, I think the order says that you have a 14-foot road, and with the dig, you gotta have 16-foot. But if that's fine, as long as there's some pullouts, you know, space strategically through this thing, you know, like in turns where you have loss of sight. Or maybe, and I put 200-foot in here, and that was just somewhere to get started. They do need a fire apparatus somewhere, or an key emergency vehicle, that there will be room to pull off for that vehicle. The grades, we went to several places, I think you, Derek, done that, and major D grades. Their relevance really bad on Budhorn subdivision, it was like 29 percent, and my little blazer, it was hard for it to get there, you know? And there was a house up there that did burn down, garden branch, that was another attached place. I remember going in there on one call one time, that the truck went up through there, and a track hole fell off the back of the truck, you know, right in the middle of the road, you got no oil still there. So that's something else that needs to be addressed in the ordinance. The, and those are left up to me, you know, but I need some help on this, and this is just what I've actually been through. The number three on the median fire apparatus road, that's pretty plain, that, you know, if you, you take back the truck more than 150 feet, you know, on an emergency vehicle. Switchbacks, there was some switchbacks. One of them was on Wild Flyer, that was really bad. I know that one of the fire codes we have probably wouldn't make it around that turn without backing up and going in. And there is a 26-foot radius that's on these hammerheads and stuff, that's on the, on the appendix, that's on the back, from the brackets. And they use a 20-foot, 6-foot radius, and evidently that's a good radius that you, and pretty much that's just, I need some help on this, you know, that we do look at these plans, that some of this is in place, or whoever's drawing the plaques. Yeah.
That was it. Number six and seven, those are all fire code things, if you know, if more than two dwellings, you have complete fire code, it's less than three, don't. And then group use, the only thing in commercial building that doesn't have to be.
Anything over two, the houses in Lake County, which road has to be named, so that's actually a road, it's not a driveway at that point.
And what's been happening is they'll submit plaques for 14, 16, 18-foot roads and not the 20-foot. Derek, an engineer, can go out and look at it, and then somebody has to replate it, you know, re-survey it, redraw it, whatever. And we're trying to eliminate some of that, combine subdivisions and fire code number one, like you mentioned.
Have you ever encountered a 6 or 8-foot road, or whatever we require, where the turn is so steep and so fast, you still couldn't maneuver it?
They run Wild Flyer, that's like that. I think you can, you can maneuver it, but it may be pull up, pull back, pull back up.
Not something you would be able to.
It's not going to be a turnaround. And especially Franklin, and Franklin, now then, if they roll the ladder, now, that thing is 39 feet long, so, but then it cuts through you.
So from a ordinance standpoint, we, we either going to have to reference the fire code and walk away from it.
That 20-foot road.
Or if we think that 20-foot roads is overkill, then we can put something, can we put something less than that in the ordinance? And then allow you the latitude, being the local authority, to be able to make a difference.
I've talked broadly about this other times. If you have a one-way road, that fire lane, if you can't put wide, because all traffic's going on. If it's a two-lane road, it's got to be 20-foot. But if they will allow you, if you got 14-foot roads to ever so often put pullouts, and yet that wasn't approved standard, to have a pullout.
So what you're saying to me is, if it's a 14-foot road, we put in full ass, we'll get it. If it's a 20-foot road, we don't have to put in one. As we talked about, when we was doing the subdivision, we thought 20-foot swaths, each side of these mountains, of course, would be a big problem. And the all the states that came up with 14-foot roads, and I think it's in the sole and segmentation, we said that's what we allow, 14-foot roads.
There's no road width, no.
It's in the sole and subdivision. It's in the sole and segmentation, isn't it? It's in this one? But we did put that in there, 14-foot.
But that's actually a conflict with the fire code.
But when we did that, we were under the assumption that Lake County didn't want to opt out of the fire.
So the commissioners have approved the fire codes, that is actually an ordinance in Lake County, even if, even if the commissioners don't, it actually is enforcing.
What happened then was the commissioners had the option, either adopt the fire code in its entirety or with the appendices, which contained that information at the time they all wrote this, this first ordinance. But now it's moved from the appendices, from an optional, to be in the regulatory part of the code itself. And that being said, we can, without Jimmy's approval, and allow ordinance in conflict with that standard.
Now, I think it's chapter five of the fire code is where it gets into the road widths. And the way I understand it, you have the authority in a force of 20-foot wide road anywhere in the county, the way I read it anyway. However, the appendices have to be adopted individually by the commission.
But if I'm, but that's one of the reference, that's only a reference, and that is approved standard?
Right.
So I can't enforce that, but I can reference that and use that, because all this left up to me.
So now, as a county, we are forced to have these fire standards, or can we still opt out of it?
They're right, it's mandated.
Is it a 20-foot pay throw plus ditched, or 20-foot including ditched?
20-foot driver service. All weather service.
Yeah.
That's where you're going to.
We're pretty good there.
Secondary roads.
So what we going to do up the gorge?
See, that's what I'm with you there.
That's what bothers me about all these ordinance, is they were written for Charlotte and Raleigh, this ain't Charlotte or Raleigh.
But they do, they do give you, they do give me the option to, to lower that standard, you know, and that's what I've done here, you know, it gives us a starting point here.
So why don't we just write it in our ordinance system, lower it some?
You can.
So we're going to say 14-foot roads with no turnouts?
No, no.
Because I would agree with that. Because I agree with that.
That's, that's what, that's why we asked Jim to come. These, these are what he feels like are reasonable, that, that will provide the intent of the code without providing by the letter of the code. But this, this will meet the intent of the code, is of course.
I think most likely. I think it will meet the intent of the code, and ditch is a starting point, but I think it's a starting place.
A starting place to what?
To, to the ordinance, I mean, putting something, either adopt, you know, put ditch, like I've got it written in the ordinance, or, you know, instead of every 200-foot, we put a level 250-foot, or 100-foot, or 50-foot, you know, for turnouts.
This is a point to start our discussion. Once, once we have that discussion, then we will take this back to Jimmy and say, okay, this is, this is what we ended up with, is this, you know, do you find that this is acceptable? Does this meet the intent? Ultimately, he's the one that has to make that decision.
But that would be included in the ordinance, rather than just something he had as reference.
That's correct.
I'm not so sure. Now, well, because if Jamie happens to lead next year, then the new fire marshal would have the authority to reinforce the 20-foot wide road, if, if they wanted to. Now, I, I think it says the fire marshal has authority to heat gate from those based on terrain, the topography, and certain conditions. So I mean, that's where you get your authority to go wait in the 20-foot wide road.
And we did some of that on the Wild Flyer, because it was, you couldn't get, because of the terrain, we left it like it was walking.
And if, if we have a 14-foot road, and we got to put turnouts every once in a while, what's the width for a 20-foot turnout in the back?
20-foot.
So 23.
There we go, 20 feet wide for a length of at least 30 feet, that's the longest.
So that's including the 14 feet, not plus.
No, that's including the 14 feet.
Basically just to give you a, so you can get around another.
Yeah, two people going side by side.
Well, that, that just makes good sense, that you do that, and you.
I'm just trying to sort of change it some.
I'm not so sure that we could write anything into our other ordinance or law, that would come fit, because they're the first one to that.
You could, you could, we have.
Can the ordinance recommend, and then it's still be at the discretion, the ordinance recommends this be the case, but it's still at the, then it's not necessarily law, it's a recommendation. And it's a starting.
Nothing is ordinance that's a recommendation. I mean, the ordinance is a law. And that was what we got into with the first subdivision ordinance, everything that we wanted to put into it, the council at the time said it couldn't be put in there. So I think that this might be a good question for council, is, you know, this, this is what we think would be a good way to fix our situation. Can we write this in to the subdivision ordinance legally? Because I think, you know, you got state law, and now we're going to adopt a county law that prohibits that?
I don't know how you, how you can do it, though, like, like on a, on a, where a hood, you know, if the road's not 20-foot, which that's what the fire code said it's got to be. But maybe we have a fire code that should allow us maybe to be able to use that right there.
I wonder if we could have a, like this appendix or something.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Put it on as an appendix, because it would be important for people to have it to refer to, or they'll come in thinking they absolutely have to do the 20-foot road, which is what we really want.
Are we already contradicted by saying that all roads in the subdivision have to be?
But now, and I don't know, Jack, I don't know all the legal stuff, but if it was an appendix, appendix, you know, or like what I've got here, wrote up right there, that is an alternative to the main.
That, that's an option? Let's, Derek, question first while we're doing this again. The code changes, and they change every three years, four years, they change. And they may touch that chapter, and then the next code recital, but they may never touch it. So that's why you have to be careful, time yourself, line by line, what this code said, the code is the same junk. And before, it was just an option, you could either adopt it or not. Now, you don't have a choice about that 20-foot road, but the options to, for the fire marshal, the fire code official, to use his discretion and use the references, is not an option.
Yeah, there's a, there's a new section in, in the chapter five, that it says, "Fire apparatus access roads shall have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet, exclusive of shoulders, except for approved security gates, in accordance with section five, this is reading, unobstructed vertical clearing of not less than 30 feet succession." And that is actually a new.
That, that's not, that's not optional, unless this name is in the discretion. Now, if, if we had, if this county had a higher notice, fire official, except for 20-foot, you need the discretion, not going to do it. They, they have, the authorities say that, we're forcing it right now, so we don't work with it. And in my opinion, we need to try not to tie our separate, to have ordinance, to say by reference, if you want to put something like the appendices, as an appendices to the, to the subdivision ordinance, I think that's what we need to ask.
I think we do, and with the road that now's 14-foot, we might have to say the federal fire.
They'd have to either say, as required by the fire code, or.
See appendix such as.
Yes.
It seems like we're going to have a hard time trying to write, trying to include anything that was against a federal law. I mean, you know, we can't honestly have, proceed with doing that. So I think at this point, we need to put that, to that we're going with, with council.
Do you know what other counties have done with this?
Well, this, the fire code's been affecting Lake County since 1991.
No, I mean.
This revision.
Oh, this is 2005, this one is just now coming through.
What kind of liability does the county put itself in, if you make a decision to build 14-foot roads and that don't work out?
None, because any code enforcement official is going to be, is going to make the discretionary decision. And why would it need to intend the code?
By 10, very tall.
I mean, by 10, it would be not safe. I mean, then ten, it would be not safe.
If it's not possible in some of these places to build the road to the width they want, or that the state requires, can we not appeal to the state?
You could, that would probably not be an option.
If it's been done before.
Case by case, that would be very, I'm concerned.
Yeah, you can change the code, it's changed, I said it changed, so anybody, any of your recommendations, changing the code, whether they ought to do it or not.
If enough of the western counties would express that it's just not practical, and in our circumstances, it is just not practical.
Well, if I get on my soapbox, it's an option. I'm sorry. All, all your, okay, but this code, Jimmy thought it opened the book for the L P S. There's no representation from western counties. But like I said, this is perfect for the flat, or the state. But we should be able to handle it. I mean, why don't you get involved in the process? If a man wants to develop something, does he have, or can he get to them before we actually get to that again? Get your permission or something?
The only time I've ever been involved is when we go and look at the review.
When we have the technical review, can we do for the W P's first time?
We've actually had a look at subdivisions, but horrible flats that can do.
Maybe it's just whatever.
I, I would like, I just don't like the part of going out and, you've got a subdivision. I want to tell you one thing, you put one in, you know, two months later, I forgot what I told him, you know, I, I. It's, that's kind of hard, and that bothers me a lot.
Well, that's not a good policy. I mean, it, it puts a lot of pressure on you and whoever may be in that position.
But if we could have an appendix, it would save.
They left the, the fire code where it could be adopted or not adopted by now in the counties. That's what they thought was, the law was, when we were doing this report, they was love. He said that they left it that way, because they knew it didn't work in the mountains. And that if, where they could either, they could either opt into it or opt out of it.
Every county we go into, every town we go into, we carry the same fire code books.
Well, I, I know that, I understand that, but is there any thing that says Macon County has to do that, and they opt, opt out of it? I'd like to have somebody answer that question.
I would like that. So, of the code book? Yes. I see, when we had a meeting, one cable was still there. The committee county commissioners at that meeting specifically asked me, do we have to adopt this? And he said, "No, if we're not going."
That's because it was in the appendix at the time, that was a reference to the code. You still have the fire code, because.
Yeah, I think that was the appendix.
Now, that language is moved from the appendices into the actual chapter of the code. That's where, that's where the.
If the commissioners accept the appendices, it's a lot more strict.
Cause they had an.
I understand that.
We did it one time, then we got to repeat.
So technically speaking, if we were to approve a subdivision right now, under our subdivision ordinance, would the violation be approved?
Well, I think that any of them that we're going out, we're going out and looking at them, and we're putting these tool out, and so I, I think these, the life use of divisions that we've done, have met, these roads have met the intent of the code.
Because he has the right way to do it, and what he's asking for us is, you know, to help.
Kind of standardize.
And so we don't, so we don't have to, everybody around the table, cause Jimmy will be fair, but he needs, he needs something.
Sounds like you're a one man board of justice. You, you need to document every.
It's better than board of justice.
That's documenting the very reason why you're allowing it, certainly.
Every, every place is different.
Oh, I know, but, but if you get, the developer says, well, you let him know it's a fourteen foot road, but I can't do it, I have the same sort of condition. So you gotta have.
Well, that's what is the fundamental.
Anybody else have any questions?
My question is, you're the only person that makes this final decision on this period, but not any others?
On the, on the fire code.
And has no review committee or anything like that?
So you're God.
No, I'm God.
The fire code is.
You do talk to me.
It just seems that's, everything's on, you know, on its own shop.
Well, that's why having these standards would be very helpful.
That's what I'm asking for, you know, and whether it's appendices or not, you know, just something in the back. You know, if they can't get the twenty foot road in, that we have an alternative means, that would, you know, that would make the intent of the code.
So we have to change our ordinance to say we must ban twenty foot roads?
Uh, you know. No, you don't have to do that. We're still going to grow, hopefully, the work going to grow, just allow Jimmy to do what we've been doing, the turnout. Well, we've got to get the language right, and that's what we.
Pretty much what you're gonna say, that the code's got to make the fire code down, cause roads have many fire codes.
Is there a subdivision?
And then that leaves me the authority to be able to make some decisions.
Is there a subdivision in Macon County where it's actually been turned out spitting?
Yes, yeah.
Where's that?
Well, I learned out of the fog.
Down the falls? Uh, up there at, uh, the, we'll scatter them out, ten foot road, up there. Jay Beach Place.
They had twenty foot, they were going twenty foot.
Yep. But seventy foot that way was turnout, so that's. If you want to see in that example of twenty foot roads, you can go there. Bill's place out here, he's had twenty foot roads too. That's one. Yeah. And that's one, paid twenty foot road. But when you get into places like, I mean, just giving us that pile of road. Somebody that had a situation like that, there was ain't nobody that turned out, or that's twenty foot road.
You don't have that option.
Good luck.
We don't have that, cause we got the fire deck, it'll be more than good.
So we take. D O T has an option?
D O Ts is there for all laws.
I know.
Anyway, this is, this is a helpful discussion, I appreciate it.
One other question, Jimmy, bridges, I know when my brother-in-law had a house in Northern States, the fire department came in, it was a Lucas beam wire, and they said they no longer cross that bridge, the fuel delivery trucks, that type of stuff, they're gonna have to work down there, and it was called. But I mean, do you encounter that much?
Well, the first one that I've got into is on down the falls.
Can you narrow?
It was six eleven two.
That one's eleven two.
But what we did on that situation was allow a bridge of width twelve feet, had turnouts on both sides, so that you couldn't.
What about weight appendices? You got to post your weight department, you're gonna post the weight limits, on three home streets.
But you don't have any weight limit requirements? Is there a fire code reference to that?
Yes.
Yes, it's actually, you have to get a good, you have to design.
No.
Should we put something in the order?
Talking him in, ledge, roll, sit, back, go.
They're gonna pave our road, and they, that, the state was gonna put a border, a creek, and it took them almost four months to go.
That's a core reason. That's a core, because of the tolls. Yeah. You do a bridge, you know, call them, that's really the power, you do the bridges all the time.
So you don't put anything in the water in your.
Well, actually, the, this army foreguy, he didn't commission to cross one time, I mean, one certain street. That's what I like about him, he can do case by case, and there's no other way possible to do it, and he allowed us to cross one time, if he's putting, and they worked out. Any more questions, Jimmy?
Just one other comment, is there any way you can work back to the fire code officials? And have Jimmy Davis and some other officials, to get some sort of leeway for the mountains? I mean, if we're trying to meet a standard, that doesn't apply.
Well, I know one of the ones that actually. If their grade is over fifteen percent, that everything above that has to be sprinkled. All houses have to go breakaway, all the buildings have to be sprinkled. Well, if actually, it's gonna be, see, I. I've not looked at anybody else's.
Is there any way you could get one of those books?
I think there's a book for it.
Yeah, I have a book.
I bet you go online and get.
You can do it online, there's a PDF.
PDF online. You can just PDF it online, just print it out for yourself. Just do a Google search for it, it'll be there.
It's a real lot rated.
Having a song, it's just a good time. Thank you, Jimmy. Appreciate it, appreciate you, appreciate you. Bounce around a little bit, Commissioner Tate's with us, and come back to the comments.
No, no, I don't want you to address the county's problems, you can let me, Jackson, for, I'm just getting. Did you mention Chester? I'll see if this will pay, I think nine three. Justin, there, I mean, this is a board, I'm trying to have a question, but I don't have a way to get. I don't have any. Give them all this before it comes to.
Yeah, I think we might have been feeding at least, once we've had it, and I would anticipate, when we get to, we'd be prepared to arrest. So probably we can go back to where we left these hours, and, and once we have this debate, we can get those hold.
He's great. And I think we had a couple things we got, I kind of had this week in Raleigh, and I think there's a couple of issues, we're just gonna start studying that.
One fifty nine, last six one. Page eight, ten. I know it's sixteen eleven. John, what is that? Page.
What's the ordinance speaking in?
An ordinance.
One picking out six one?
Yeah, yeah.
Homeowners.
Homeowners association. The handout that we got last time, no page number, but it's, it's, if you mark where we stopped last time, it's part one. That's where we're taking back off, one fifty nine, six one. Uh, Mr. Singer, can I make some comments? Collaborate on maybe.
Yeah, the, the intent of the homeowners association, who created the subdivision ordinance, was to provide a vehicle for care of the common grounds, and the maintenance of the roads, and storm or runoff. When you're in a minor subdivision, um, there seems to be a fairly large cost. And I say this because I created a small subdivision, and I suddenly realized, hey, well, this is, got a little bit extra money. But, um, you need a vehicle for the owners of that subdivision to be able to collect money from those who don't participate in care and maintenance of the common areas. And apparently, the only way to really do it, um, is to form a corporation. So you have to have a corporation, which means after that, form a landlord, you have to get a lawyer involved, start a corporation. And if you have somebody doing two, well, let's say, three lots, uh, they have a fairly extensive amount of money involved, maybe a thousand dollars somewhere in that range. So I'm just wondering if there's another vehicle. Uh, what I wanted to do was, I was trying to do some sort of thing where you can say, okay, if this homeowner doesn't want to pay for the maintenance of the road, you know, we can put a lien on the property. Well, if you don't have a corporation, you'd have to do it personally. And I don't think anybody in a subdivision personally wants to start paying the lawyer to do this, if he's gonna have to collect money from the other homeowners. If they don't want to pay him, they're not gonna do it. I'm in another subdivision, I own a lot in another subdivision, and that's what we run into. Not everyone's paying for the cost of the road. And so, they wanted to hire a lawyer, and who's gonna pay for the lawyer, so. But a corporation, you have protection, because you are a corporation. So I guess my question is, do we want to revisit? How do we do it so that it doesn't become a burden for a small subdivision? A large subdivision, there's plenty of money, I mean, if you're selling out many lots, but in a small subdivision, it can be quite costly. And I don't know of another way legally to enforce the requirements of the homeowners association without the North Carolina corporation?
You could probably do a level two.
Still a problem.
It, uh, it's probably, it's cheaper up front. The ongoing cost of, of, I don't know. I don't know how she'd do it.
It's, it's the legal side of it, and who's gonna pay for this, and who's gonna take the responsibility? And so I thought it's something that we might want to revisit while we're revisiting the subdivision. And I was hoping Chester would maybe give us some comments about, you know, another way to do this. If you're the same authority, you could put a lien on someone else's fire. Does this apply to the mountain subdivision?
Yes.
Also. Could we say it don't apply to mountain subdivision?
It needs to be, and it needs to fly out.
That's one big problem, Mike.
Yeah, we, we just do that.
Well, there's nobody letting any of them. You've got a house with a subdivision road.
Well, that, that, I asked about that, it apparently applies to government, does any change anything?
Everybody, I have the job, but it's.
Well, I asked Macon, they said, no.
Yeah, Macon.
Just, if, if the subdivision goes in, and people are using an existing road, but a private road, you know, that people have been living along for some time. Can those people, what happens to them, they aren't forced to join the homeowners association, are they? Or, or do they then have to join the homeowners associating? You know, say like, a road I live on, there's four or five of them. It's, if there was to be a subdivision put in there, would the current owners have to join?
No, you, you can't force it.
The only, the only time you would have a minor subdivision that wouldn't be in the homeowners association, if all the lots were access off a smitty road. And they had any big, well, water, but with no comment.
So what kind of problems do you run across with this other, the experience that Larry taught me?
There ain't no means to talk.
The only, you just gotta try to recover your money if you sell a lot. Like Larry, he, he was in a, kind of a bad situation, but I don't know how you. I, I don't know what he was.
No, I was, I was. The only stipulation that companies, a homeowners association, in the ordinance is for the purposes of the road maintenance agreement. That's the only, that's the only thing, so, that's the scope of the homeowners association and subdivision ordinance, if you read it. So, maybe it would be something as requiring a minor subdivision to have a road maintenance agreement in place, rather than a homeowners association, but I'm like, you know, then how you gonna get, how you, what's your recourse there? I mean, it's unenforceable, so, I don't know, it's, like, like you said, Lamar, that's, I don't know.
Well, if it's unenforceable, but even with this homeowners association out here, if it's unenforceable, what do you do?
No, if you go homeowners association.
If it's a true corporation, the subdivision is important.
And, uh, when they, like, people are coming for, they, they usually get the money.
Homeowners association has an awful lot of talent, it's kind of scary.
Yeah, it is.
But if it's limited to road maintenance, then that doesn't seem too scary.
It's usually in road maintenance, and then utilities, if there are, it becomes.
Unless it's written in a tear agreement, because I read bills homeowners association, so that's pretty, that's pretty rough. I would look.
Some, some of our older corporations, a lot, they just, some of our older ones, when the lots are sold, you just have to have the officers listed and record the documents at the courthouse. And that document for recording, you can go by, when it gets to make your documents recorded. And it does not have to be, it's easier to be a corporation. But we've got two or three that, in the subdivisions that we've formed, which have been put in there, it's in their deeds that they have to join. And then if your officers are elected, you can record the documents. You can't take it for a small enterprise.
What would be, what would be the downside of a simple statement that says any homeowners association must be, that would get most people.
Well, if, if, if it's not a corporation, you can't have a bank. Somebody's got to have their social security number on that bank. So there's numerous problems with leaving on these.
So what's the downside of saying, just making a statement that all have to be a corporation?
Well, I think it's basically, I wouldn't say it is.
I think it's an undue burden.
I think it's undue burden on the subdivision of three houses.
Sure, that's a little guy. I, I don't know if you can raise it up.
But it seems like we have to have some provision to record.
Why is it undue burden? What's an undue?
Went out of the car. See, I think the ma, the maintenance of a corporation is pretty expensive out here. About four hundred dollars a year.
But if you've got four lots, you know, that's a hundred dollars a year.
Plus the road fees.
But if you've got a nonprofit organization, a corporation, then the tax, you know, the, the cost of that, that's not much once you give it in place. It's. It's the start of the cost.
What is it?
Well, it depends on what the law is.
Yeah, they, they rent out the deed every year.
If it's nonprofit.
Nonprofit.
No, if it's nonprofit.
Could you set up a homeowners as a nonprofit?
It's supposed, it should be a nonprofit.
Of course, so.
Yeah, they shouldn't be a problem. I, I believe in the game.
I just, because they hold money. They don't spend it every.
Well, they just call it deserted.
So you can have it in corporations as a file.
If you didn't, then you have tax lap over for a year.
Who's going to do the bookkeeping? You know, technically speaking, if you have a corporation and you have a group of offices, if they're making decisions, they have a liability against them, but they make their own decisions. If somebody gets hurt, you've got to have insurance. I mean, it can be get, it can run up.
Well, yeah, it can.
For a small subdivision. I, I guess my question is, is there a way to, to the really small ones? I'm not complaining. I'm just raising the issue. I mean, can, can we, can we exempt maybe the small subdivision from homeowners associations? Just have it apply to the individuals? What, what kind of, that is the difference between?
Very good.
See, eight, that's getting, that's, that's, that's really not a small subdivision.
You, you can have a quit, the steep. And you have a, a very hard time with homeowners association. You don't have some teeth.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because there'll be two or three that are writing the rest of them.
Sometimes it's hard to get, even if you have the thing in mind.
Yeah.
But we should go two. Yeah, I agree. I agree.
But I, I agree, Larry, it is harder when you've got two or three law offices. But I don't think two, three, you've got.
Three to eight.
So what if we put language in there to say that if you had three or less lots, it's not a requirement?
So there are, it's two.
Two.
So the downside would be.
What if we did three instead of two?
Well, if you've got a road, you, you have a property. If you're one of these.
How long a road? Well, minor subdivisions, eight, uh, eight lots or less, so with a road, seven, thirteen hundred and twenty one of your feet. Yeah, I understand that. When I was thinking about going down to three, can you put a road length on it? If your road goes over thirteen or whatever feet it is, then you don't have to have that on homeowners association. I mean, if you have three, one eighth lot, and the road's going to be what, four hundred feet tops? It's still maintaining.
We, we, where our house is, there's one, two, three little houses. The whole area probably encompasses less than ten acres. And in our provisions and restrictions, it even states that everyone that owns shares equally in the cost of road. We're a pothole. Big bit of my truck, and I don't make the fix just, just when I go out, go by, patch and draw for it. Because there's no, there's, there's no.
Association. No way to make a payment.
So, you know.
Without you wanting to report.
That's right.
So even if you've got a homeowners association, you can wind up in that same boat, because if somebody says, I ain't paying, you cannot take the report.
The corporation takes the.
Right.
So that's, that's, that's a key, to me, that's a key component.
I agree.
This corporation's doing, not.
I'm not complaining about having homeowners association.
Oh, I'm not either.
All I'm trying to do is, is get three lots or less, you know, something that's really small, that's, you know.
My point was that this, this, you know, powers would be considered destroying a small subdivision. And they, they, in my mind, when I were home, I'd come out in the morning, up to a rough paved road, it's just as big as years of under lots of them. A thousand of them, because I'm going to ride across it, so. I don't, you know, I don't give any answer.
So really, they're, we don't, we can't or won't change anything. It's going to stay like it is. And there's no remedy to the situations you're talking about, right? Unless there's no share property. Yeah, just three separate lots, that's a whole other.
There's no share property.
Ten lots.
As long as they talk such a state road here, it's a state.
But does it state that?
There's some language in there that says homeowners association. Let's see what it said. Common road, it says, it says, homeowners association should be responsible for maintenance and control of recreation facilities, common space, and subdivision roads contained within a residential subdivision. So if you don't have any of those commonalities, then you don't need a subdivision.
Just like you said, common space.
So what standards do those roads and facilities have to be maintained?
That's the end. It'd be up to the, to the board.
Yeah.
How are you going to be interested in all the standards, you know, committee?
Actually, you get in that situation, you could have somebody say, you're picking on me.
What do you think, Larry? What's the fix?
Fine, obviously, I mean, I raised the issue just as I get the comments from the board. I couldn't find a fix. I mean, I was like, it's a legal issue here that you got to follow. And it's a process. You don't want to do it as an individual, so you need a homeowners association, which means you need it. An LLC, or you need a, a corporation. So you've got to deal with the price. But if you have three small lots and you sell these lots at ten dollars a lot, you know, you've got.
Larry, you know, you're saying a lot at ten dollars a lot.
I wasn't, I wasn't having a hot topic. For me, I'm thinking about somebody else saying, yeah, it's a small lot. I have houses on you.
Or you put in a road that.
They went backwards and.
Or you, or you put in a road that's up to DOT standards and petition to take it over or something.
Yeah. They want to give us back our roads now.
I do think there are a lot of us who lives in a, in this area, that lives on roads with no maintenance agreement. You know, you don't want to.
Susan, does that sort of handle your comments, too?
Um, well, no, that, this was really a question. I just couldn't figure out how this worked. So we have a lot of subdivisions that were started a while back, and then they didn't get sold as single subdivision. And if I'm not mistaken, parts of Wildflower are now owned by different developments, right?
Yes.
So how does homeowners association work? And their, their lots aren't even necessarily continued.
I think that association combined the whole subdivision. They're going to give you more of a subdivision all the time.
But is that required? That this, and that just struck me as how odd, you know, this lot is owned by one, it's part of one development, this is part of another development, and how, how the world is operating?
Well, an example of where that don't work is the, what happened over with that subdivision legacies in Jackson County. I don't know how many people are familiar with that. When I was talking with the planning director over in Jackson County, Gerald Green, it's a nightmare. Whenever you have a bunch of different owners, a bunch of different, uh, homeowners associations going on, he said it was a nightmare, and, uh, that's how he described it.
Well, I just, I mean, a lot of, a lot of developments were started, not completed, and if things get going again, they may be under very, you know, spotty ownership. And I just wonder how that's going, what kind of effect that's going to have. I mean, even a place like Wildflower with major roads, maybe you say they've decided to have one.
They do, but they wouldn't have been.
But they wouldn't have to. So what, do we need to think about that, or do we just?
But if, if they did it now, and you told them they had to build a homeowners association, whatever they come in and plat for that subdivision, it's all going to fall in under that. So it doesn't matter if it goes bankrupt and then it gets, that land still, that, that deed would still have that reference to it.
It's not strategic.
But a lot of times, that road's coming through twenty-five, thirty other lots that aren't in that piece of lot, that, that aren't in that land area that, that.
Initially.
Yeah.
Oh.
So like, you know, we, you could come down twenty-five, thirty lots that somebody else owns, and then this guy down here bought this other piece, but this road's used to get to that piece.
We maintain some gates for a large subdivision cashers. When you drive into this, like one development, you go through three sets of gates to get to the guy's house. And I, I, fortunately, we do work for all three homeowners associations. There's three. Three they developed, the road went through, another guy developed, and each one of them wants their own gate, which I think is great. But, but to go home, you got to, you got to slap three times to get to your house.
So you want four more gates?
But they still have to come over the.
Umbrella, yeah. I mean, it's the.
First gate, second gate, to the people that buy lots in behind the second gate. You don't draft, it doesn't.
These can't fix.
Of course. Yeah. You can't, you can't block.
You can't, right. So that takes care of itself, doesn't it? I mean, in the way that.
It's just for the gates, but I think there's a lot of other issues that arise around what you're talking about.
Yeah, I just.
But there's no way to fix it.
So like you're saying, if the people behind two, the people behind one are basically paying for a lot more maintenance, because these people from two are using it. But they're not two and three are using it, but one paying for it all, because it gets double the traffic.
And from what I understand, Wildflower, it's not even like one, two, three. They're not even meticulous. So it's, is that not right, man, that there's?
Yeah, they, they bought some here, some here.
Yeah.
It's not just one chunk in the middle.
I have a question to ask Chester under a homeowners association. This large developer's developing, and they maintain control, they haven't given that homeowners association until they sell like ninety percent of the lots. If they go bankrupt before they sell those ninety percent of the lot, what happens to that homeowners association? And who files bankruptcy? Is the homeowners association filing bankruptcy?
I just don't think there's no way to cover everything.
I think, I think that's a good question to ask, to ask Chester. Susan, did you?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, really, this was just, just a question. Wondering if we're going to really see some smirly things in the future when some of these.
I don't think we'll ever see another Wildflower.
We believe Susan's has been answered.
Do they want to see? If they want to see an example of that, or you may not tell that here, where you've got a little subdivision, the town has a lot of the game. You come up, you've got another little subdivision to go buy a little trailer zone, but then we own the one in the back, the homeowners association, or the development, it's still on the housing. We've got six in there. Well, you have to go over all of this, but nobody in the road down will ever pay maintenance fees. And then you've got another little subdivision that cuts off to the right and left track. So you've got, go out there and look.
Yes, I can.
That, that, those problems right there can't be solved.
Can't be solved.
No, it's a prime example.
Yeah, but there are numerous places like that, yeah. And the state takes over those overall.
And you're aware that you would be in.
They can't take them over because if states pass a forty foot wide wave, it's only forty foot coming in, so you don't have to take.
This conversation that we're having is in the same vein as the green access, or the access roads tab in your folder. The access roads going to subdivisions can be stamped with the emergency vehicle, uh, access roads do not meet the standards of the subdivision owners. Emergency vehicles may be limited, access by emergency vehicles may be limited. And in doing this, the same thing is with the homeowners association when people that, numerous calls were coming in. And Matt can probably attest to it. I don't know if he's got any yet, but when I was in the planning office, numerous calls came in, and the people that were located below these subdivisions that were coming in above them and getting created, basically they're, during the construction period, they tore their road all to pieces, getting with concrete trucks and trucks hauling entrusses and everything else. Tore their road all to pieces and were left with no way to get it fixed. And, uh, you know, the access roads going to these subdivisions don't have to meet any standards. And a lot of times you've got people that are located below these subdivisions that never formed a homeowners association, like the situations that we've heard. Whereas the subdivision above them has formed a homeowners association. But being as there's no provision on these access roads, these people now are left with a road that, that is in disrepair. You know, I've, I've heard horror stories. People saying we can't even get to our house hardly. But, you know, it does have an effect on the subdivision people above, but a lot of times they'll put another entrance in.
But there's something else, too. The homeowners are going to have to cross that road to get in there anyway. But if it's beyond their, below their standards, wouldn't they take responsibility? I mean, they could or could not, but it seemed to me like if they wanted to live in the subdivision, have these great roads, and they're going to have homeowners to take care of it, they're going to want to come across a road that's pretty easy to get to.
You'd think that.
They've got a poor weather, rain trouble.
You, you'd think that, but that's, I mean, that wasn't always the case. And a lot of times it's to these subdivisions that went in there and got built down, and three lots sold in there, and two people build a house, and the thing went belly up, and none of, no other lots were sold, and now they have no recourse.
But I mean, didn't those houses gain, I mean, there was needed access to that piece of property to turn into subdivision?
Right away, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, that was given at some point.
A lot of these old roads don't have, they just always been.
Were they cart paths, was it legal terms?
Well, in no groundstone, don't they? They're just a, a road that's always been, some of them with wide roads.
That's fair.
They're just aisles around.
How long?
Well, how do you want to crack that if you're separated? Someone is regulating.
We just can't.
I don't think you can touch that. I think.
But if it's a fire apparatus access road, that, that road serves more than two houses, Jimmy just said it's got to meet the fire code.
If the road's put in place at the time the code's adopted.
Well, you're adding on to that road. I mean, you're, you're making an adjustment to that road. It's just like. But that way the road uphill and that can be forced by the, by the fire code. Is that right, Jeff?
Yeah, because, I mean, you may have to climb up somebody's yard.
Yeah.
There's no way you can do that.
That's like saying the building came, came out, so you got to take your house down and build it up to the same.
We beat the chase for a dirt floor month. I'd be back in business, I'd build some cabins. We're going to take that.
So you're saying you're all for it.
Carrie, did you ever come up with, when you had to deal with people with that problem, did you come up with any idea of any solution?
What's the answer? Well, like so many other things in planning, there is no definitive answer.
No, because we had one of our, that, uh, the, the people, the developer was willing to build a good white road, fix it all, and they would have. And they would have signed.
Well, that, that happened a lot.
Yeah.
That would happen. That would happen.
We don't want our road.
That would happen to our road, that's weird.
Well, yeah.
That would happen.
It is. I mean, you live in big cities and stuff, when developers come in and do a subdivision, they've gotta pay for sidewalks, they gotta pay for additions to schools and everything. So, I mean, and you can do that on a smaller scale, but in Macon County, no.
If they had a right way, you could maybe even force them to fix it.
Most of the time, there's not a right.
If you don't, if there's not a right way, and I'm putting the nicest subdivision in the world past your house, and I come down and say, "Warren, we're gonna, we're gonna knock this thing in, or put a twenty-foot paved road," and everyone's saying, "Well, I don't need twenty."
I thought you were gonna destroy my daydreams.
Well, perfect. So, I don't know.
Numbers times.
Following up what your point is, I don't think there's any way that we can, I don't know how we can put a code here to do that.
We just stay below that line.
We can develop the standards only.
Next page, one fifty-nine dot six four, which.
There's a couple things with the road standards we wanna talk about, other than what Jimmy had mentioned. Compaction of field, the situation that Derek and I found is currently the subdivision ordinance requires the county administer two compaction tests, one for road and one for adjacent land. The county obviously has no compaction test equipment, it won't be in the compaction business. Our recommendation from the planning department, or my recommendation, I guess, is to require third-party verification of compaction. When we come to sections that need compaction, we just have to go up to do it.
Do you have any idea what the cost? Maybe sixty, sixty-eight bucks or something.
About a couple hundred bucks, first time you can.
Yeah, I got it. What do you weigh, yeah, like, how long you grow?
And we're talking about compaction on field.
Were you peeing the back or visual, residual soil? So, you have the cost of the compaction test, plus the cost of the proctor? How much is it? Are you proctoring? Probably a proctor? Every time the soil changes, you have to have that on?
And I think Chris, you and Derek have talked a long time about this, I mean.
Yeah. How's it being in force now?
We don't have the equipment, we've got to pay a lot of money.
I don't really wanna sit in the county getting in that business either.
So, what do you do to determine whether it's compacted?
We just, right now, we're asking them to do.
Would, would it make sense for this requirement, for you to build roads like that to be licensed contract?
I thought we already did that.
And let them?
No, that's not a guarantee, but I'm, for example, that, that's a license contract. We did that.
Well, we started, we did get licensed at the end.
Didn't change these.
You had to add it when you start, or just when you get done?
I don't think anybody's building a road to serve a major, but it's not the license.
I agree with that, I'm saying.
Well, by law, anything over thirty thousand dollars is supposed to be, and of course it's that.
It seems like we have to have some kind of compaction standards, cause.
So, so all you're saying is that we don't need a compaction standard, we need to say that the homeowner.
No, we, we need a standard, we need to say.
But we're just trying to verify it off to the homeowner and not that guy.
The developer.
The developer. And if he's doing a major subdivision, he's gonna pass that off to us.
Doesn't this just need to be in the bank, the subdivision's ordinance?
I don't, I don't.
But I was hearing you just quite said that, my house was part of the subdivision.
But shouldn't it be, well, I guess it is.
I don't know, they've been working on it.
Three years now. That was in the construction plan that we talked about.
It was?
Yeah. That was, that idea was eliminating this DOT standard language.
Well, it was the commission's still, it was a ground, it was a.
Not the construction standards, and the S and E amendments.
So, can I get you to repeat your recommendation again?
Well, Jack, it's probably a good point, it's maybe switch gears a little bit, talk to the construction planners and the road control organ.
If I get five to eight percent of whatever the U-Bike is, including the dry.
They like the ultimate seven.
If we put it in the subdivision, I mean, in the soil segmentation, does that make it include a driveway going somewhere?
Uh, let you just put it.
See, that's why I don't want to put it in soil segmentation.
I think it's a major issue with that subdivision.
It, it seems like since we're in the, our assignment is to revise this, that we should keep our compaction standards in the subdivision ordinance, even though we would like to see the compaction standards apply outside of subdivisions, which would be regulated by the S and E, but we're not working on that right now. So, it seems like we should get what we need in this, and then if the commission acts against the S and E.
Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, it wouldn't be a great scene if that appeared both, as long as the, as long as the work was very consistent.
But, but. If you bring in land that we didn't usually intend to wreck, such as.
We're not working on that. If they put it in that, then whoever, us or whoever, whoever made that is everybody. But I'm saying, if it gets out, I think it would prove us for it to be of the same language instead of one say one, one say no.
Great, can I get you to repeat your recommendation a long time?
I'll break some language back in, what we were just looking at is requiring design professionals to certify the compaction.
The ordinance will give the, the standards, but the certification would come from an outside source rather than the county.
What, what would be the standard from an engineer's standpoint to certify it anyway?
Well, it'd have to be a certain percentage of the dry density, that's determined by the design requirement.
So, why would he use it?
I think if you have anything in here, it just needs to be that fill material shall be compacted in accordance with engineering's recommendations.
Yeah, perfect. I agree with that. Cause, I mean, y'all are held to the standard by the state anyway, right? So, it's already.
Well, yeah, I mean, the proctor number, that's it. I mean, as well, like you said, it's, once you get that proctor number, you got it.
And that number could be different every two hundred feet.
Yeah. He's, he's gonna come back with some language that, that maybe we can finalize on, and talk about some of the issues that you're talking about, you know, if we don't give him, if he don't come up with some language and something that he can use, like build a mile road, do one compaction test halfway through, and say, "Man, I'm good to go," and we don't give him any tool beyond that, then he's gonna have to accept a compaction test.
Right, and we had discussed at length about frequencies and.
But that needs to be included in this.
How would you temperature? We're gonna talk about that later.
Typical station spacing, you get.
The other thing, if you look at number two, stone or paved areas, says currently one fifty-nine, six and four subdivision, it's like private roads, which our page showing the requirements of visiting DOT and stone based top surface. And it goes on to say, you know, minimum thicknesses and all that. The problem Derek and I found is the standard for DOT is pretty, pretty hard to find.
Well, we could put that in there, and put that up there in there after.
Our recommendation is design professional certified, taking standard. And we don't need to be, personally, I feel that we don't need to be building private roads in DOT's town. If engineer designs, if engineer designs, we take a bond on that road until it's completed, and we need an engineer sign off saying, "That is standard."
We wouldn't stay the standard.
I don't think we need to.
I don't know how you keep them from paper being paid. I mean, I guess it's up to the engineer.
Except the engineer wants to take it, I guess it's.
The owner is willing to accept it.
What you're saying is, is allow the design professional to, to do a design for the pavement inside the road, sign off on it, and we would accept that, because we would, the county would say that that design professional, I love the expertise to do that, based on soil conditions and all the other things that you could say. Now, there's future issues with planning and subdivision. I got a policy on that.
Well, it would seem like that you would want some, some lifespan standard, cause you could put asphalt down for the last six months, or you could put it down for the last for ten years. And a design professional would only be required to design whatever the standard. There's not really a standard for asphalt. I mean, you could put it down for construction purposes only, and then be done with it. When you take the airport extension, whatever you do at the airport, for example, concrete versus asphalt, versus the lifespan of the product, so I don't know, I don't know how you address that, and it could be just between the homeowners association and the design professional, and the design professional can say, "Well, the developer only asked me to do it for a year, so I provided the product for the last three years."
Well, you know, it's, well, two, it's all in your subways, too, and you set it up, and you've got three, six inches orange, and then six inches red, and you have to, it's a different.
Say, if you design, let's say you design a road base, we want time on fight approvals, and we start selling some lots, we're gonna bond, and we bond. In that time, we're holding that bond, if it's not paid to your standard.
Well, what if it's paid to my standard, but the work takes longer than what I designed the road for? Now, the county is stuck having to fix the problem with the bond, and what are you, are you bonding a six-year road, or are you bonding a six-month road?
Well, it's a good point. What, what if the, the lifespan was included, lifespan to be included by a professional of the road? And then, and then you'd know what you were bonding.
Well, you would think the construction documents would say, you know, road designed for whatever intended lifespan of the product, under your specifications, your design requirements, if you deal with professional developers.
Do we want, do we wanna simply, instead of, instead of putting a exactly the thickness, the pavement, et cetera, et cetera, do we wanna just include a shopping list of what that design professional should include in his design?
I think that's stepping on his feet. He's, I mean, he's, he's bound by state statute to, to provide certain requirements in part of the design.
Or we just wanna say one thing, the only thing we ask for in there to clear is how long it's supposed to last.
Well, man, when you see in subdivision, when you've seen tracking crumbling roads in the past, where they just, they weren't built to any standard, how would this get around that?
Most of the ones we've seen use the places to stand, I don't know if it's wrong, but.
But how would we get around that happening in the future, if, if we don't stay at standard?
Well, yeah, but you've got a lot of difficulty when you start staying at standard. I like what Chris is saying, I just don't know how to. But you gotta be careful, because we don't need to be setting a standard to any degree of reference of standard.
Can you set a length that the surface is supposed to last?
Well, you know, you pave a road, so you pave a hundred feet of road there, and it's, you know, as far as cars run over it's fine, and you start running a bunch of dump trucks and all trucks, and then it goes to hell.
Well, it depends to what.
Lifespan, too.
Depends to what ash stuff loading you're looking at. If you're looking at highway loading versus light residential, they're different design standards.
That's what you'd have to do.
But people who are building roads should take it upon themselves.
To get the person that's gonna do the rest, they want to, and get documentation of what kind of roads that they're supposed to build. I mean, do we wanna take on any responsibilities?
I don't know if the county does, no. I don't think the county needs to be in the road building business.
But we do need to be in the business of people knowing that if they're buying somewhere, the roads might actually fall apart.
Well, we've got that already.
I don't know about that. I think people ought to be responsible for that, not what the county's gonna do.
Well, I mean, if the subdivision ordinance is trying to, to regulate certain aspects of the design, it seems like that's, that's part of what they're trying to do.
I think it's trying to establish a standard.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to establish a standard, whether we set the standards or whether the engineer does.
Are there architectural standards for different roads? Yes, there are. So, I mean, an architect, if he was designing a road, he would use a half-inch asphalt top, and then a two-inch base. There's no architect that's.
You'll make my.
We need, we need some kind of a minimum standard.
Well, if that, if we worked out between the man hiring the work, the man who's designing the, the.
You have to know what standard it was designed to, and what the lifespan is. And if they tell us that, it's, you know, if somebody wants to know, they can look it up.
But I think you have to be careful, I mean, with the bonding thing, what happens if they don't finish, and your bond's not enough to finish the project?
Which was, I have. The design specialist says this road's going last year.
Our, our bond's set up to cover, to be, right now, to be a hundred and twenty-five percent of an engineer-certified cost estimate.
What happens if that estimate's wrong? Or you have a spike in materials in the one year period?
There you end, you can't, I mean, it's just like an access road.
I really think, I think, but. But that's a bad view for a county.
Where would we have been if they had a toll, if they hadn't had that toll?
So, you would rather us cut the roads in and finish, or we'd sell off?
Well, I think a person ought to know what their bond.
I think the people that buy those lots that don't have roads to them, that's their problem.
We can't sell them if they're not the final plan.
Well, I, I know that.
So, we can't guarantee a road being.
But we need to stop and think about all of that, because if, if a man wants to buy a lot, and they don't have roads to them, is it a gamble? See, pick its road up to that.
If it's his one lot, that, that's not.
Well, I mean, you know, if the deal falls through, at least about that one lot, that's what we're talking about.
And what about my subsidies? I think, I think the bonding issue is, this can't what you say, but the bonding issue's gonna come up in later discussions.
So, it shouldn't really get into this.
You know, we'll, we'll discuss that, I think we need to bite to this, is, is Ford gonna take any action, the road people, the road standard?
Well, maybe the thing to do there is just to request on the plan, that you have a certain minimal lifespan for the road that design becomes the burden of the design.
Life span and for the design in four.
Correct, for kind of like Wildflower Bridge, we have to stay below that for the bridge.
So, what happens if it doesn't do that?
Who gets, who gets paid? The engineer? Is that posted? I mean, at the time, you're saying put it on the plan.
Oh, it's in the ordinance.
Yeah.
You're just saying put it in the ordinance, and it's required, we show on the plan.
Yes. And then the engineer comes back and certifies it, that's done?
A, a third-party verification. You're not gonna get the guy that designed it to certify it. You get him to get some.
Yeah, I'm another, like another engineer to go back and certify.
That testing.
Yeah.
So, what, what you're saying, you think to address this, we need to add, that it needs to appear on the plan, the time span, lifespan of the surface, and.
Design.
The load, the capacity, the vehicle.
Okay, and that it be verified.
And have third-party verification.
Third-party verification after.
Well, it'd be there, there again, after.
So, now, if I'm not, on the compaction and feel, they have to replace them there?
Well, it'd be inclusive in, in the, the compaction's all part of the, of the design.
You've got, you've got a, yeah, if you design the road for a certain standard, that compaction will follow into packing the road, and also the place portion.
Yeah, I mean, that's essential in a third-party verification.
Is that a motion, sir?
I'll make a motion for that.
That's your say.
You might have to repeat it.
Would you please? Tell them what the. Would you please tell them what the intended value is?
Repeat Chris's motion.
Tell Chris what he made a motion for.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
What are those standards that we're going to put in there?
It's up to the engineer. He just has to say what he has to say.
Disclosure is what we're basically saying.
Excuse me, move ahead. Chris made a motion that we had to, subdivision ordinance under road standards, paved roads, stoner paved roads, that the design professional would clearly stay, stayed on the plat, whatever the design professional certifies as a design standard and lifespan of paving, along with third-party verification and inspection.
I think she estimated lifespan.
Are we saying we can't do a standard?
Yes.
Of the OT standard.
I was saying, if you don't stay on the plat, what kind of road you're doing. Like, he said paid. His word said paid.
Yeah. You said paid, so he asks, are we saying they can't do a stone road? I don't think that's what we're trying to say.
No, that's under section style, no more paper.
But we do need to amend your motion to save and remove the DOT references, this replacing DOT references.
Yeah, I'm okay with taking DOT.
Okay with yourself. So we'll clear it on that. So get your part of the discussion.
How about the gravel road? Oh, I'm sorry. So compaction doesn't bother gravel?
I don't know, he said stone or gravel.
It's under section style, no more paper.
What you read back, you just said paid. I think you got to add stone or paid. Because, I mean, an engineer could, could design a, a stone road.
Right, that's terrible.
Chris, would you like to amend your motion?
Sure.
I would amend it second, once he does the first.
This is not our.
We've got good batteries.
That's not a preclude, a developer from building the DOT standard.
No, it'd be more.
You can go above.
You just make your vote.
Do you have any?
Commissioner, thank you.
I would just come back for a recommendation that we all have recommended, introduction of the county, design professionals, you know, to see the definition. We hit this. I just looked at the definitions. It's not professional.
We headed, I'll have it.
Hey, now, what about like Larry in his subdivision where he wanted to split four lots up and he already had a road existing out there, now does, what do we do there? Does that just sort of, does, does that mean that Larry now has to?
He's not building a road, so he shouldn't have to worry with this.
That's right. I mean, this is for new, all new stuff.
They don't say that, though. The ordinance don't say this is for new.
That's true.
And you have to keep one. It said that it was for anything that took place after adoption of ordinance.
This subdivision, Larry's subdivision is taken place after adoption of the ordinance. So therefore, it has to meet the subdivision. Yeah, if those roads are within the subdivision, they have to come up to the standard of the subdivision. Like you said, the access road doesn't, but Larry's roads do, because he's creating a subdivision. He's dividing a parcel of land into more than one lot. So that's a subdivision, which has to come under the standard of the subdivision.
He will have to.
So does that mean that now he's got to get engineer certified just like?
Yeah.
Well, are we going to say that everybody that has to be signed up by any?
Not just in subdivision, period. And I don't think that, that, that kind of, how does a road standard define this subdivision? I think it changes now. It's the same?
Yeah.
Well, he's got to meet the.
This is, this kind of, to your background, this was a work site that had four or five buildings already on it with two entrances and two roads servicing those four or five structures. And so we wanted to subdivide that one parcel into a subdivision and made it into four parcels. So under those conditions, I'm saying, we're saying everything is there except, you know, we're just putting it up. We're not putting in new houses, we're not putting in new roads, new sub takes, we elect to do anything.
So not even new houses?
No.
That wouldn't make a part of the subdivision, would it?
It's a subdivision.
Anytime you split that lot, you're a subdivision.
Probably all we need to do is whatever the road, existing road is there, qualify design, and the road says, this is the lifespan estimated.
This is a conversation we had a couple of months ago about tomorrow with, with a single parcel that had four or five houses on it. This is the same conversation.
Where you've got existing structures, existing roads, they would be exempt from any of these standards.
I agree.
Because they've been servicing them anyway, they just haven't been different owners. So why wouldn't you want to do that?
But, and what precludes us from doing that, I think, is the definition of a subdivision by general statute. It's.
That's a state definition.
By general statute, it, it says a subdivision is, for purposes of this ordinance, subdivision means all divisions of a tract or parcel of land into two or more lots, building sites or other divisions. So the houses, if you built the houses and they're there and you're cutting those houses into lots, or there's no houses there and you're cutting them up into building sites or all other divisions for the purpose of sale or building development, and shall include all divisions of land with all the dedication of a new road or a change in existing roads, but the following shall not be included within this ordinance. Then it goes on to state your exemptions. But the minute you divide that, whether you're dividing it into a lot that a house is already on, or you're dividing it into different building sites, no houses.
Well, I agree with subdivision, but, but if you're not building a road, the roads aren't in there and the houses are already there, then, then sure, there's a way we can exempt that.
Because you're, you're creating a lot, so.
No, you can, you can exempt it from the road standard, so if the roads are already there.
Well, it could be a logging.
The only way, the only exemptions, though, the only exemptions in the general statute, really, the general statute for a subdivision, it's only has four exemptions. In the general statute.
Yeah, we're going to exempt it here from this subdivision ordinance by, because you're going to have beaucoup de problems with that over time.
But it seems like you can back that making it as a 24 road.
There'll be places you can't do that.
The, the, the problem that we're having in the, the art that Chris said, already we had months ago, of this issue is an issue that's at the very core of the definition of a subdivision.
I mean, but, but your road standards are for new roads that are being constructed, serve a new subdivision.
But as Lewis said, what if there's a.
You should be able to exempt those kinds of subdivisions from the road standards, the road building standards.
And I agree, but all I'm saying is.
What does the fire code allow you to exempt?
I don't know. The fire code, they've been there, the, the roads are being used and they're meeting the fire code for that. See, what I'm thinking about is, nothing's changing, so why would you want to put that kind of burden on a person just because?
Well, it is going into multiple owners, it's got a single, I would guess.
It's going into association.
Yeah, it's going into multiple owners instead of a single owner.
But they're there, they've been there. And you cannot go in there and redo the road in my case, the road standards, most of the time, ladies and gentlemen, you get, this is all kind of problems.
Well, no, I'm saying you have to rework the road, you just got to get somebody certified with.
Well, that don't make no sense either, because they're, they're there, they've, someone's been there 40, 30 years. Chris, Chris will say it's good for a day and that's all it's got to do. That's what you're saying.
Make 500 bucks, huh, Chris?
It'll last 24 hours.
Yeah, but the individual that buys that knows what he's getting there.
The road standards kick in.
Yeah, but that ain't up to us to protect people and find stuff to be sure they get what they're buying. That's, the man's buying.
I think, I think the point is that if, if the road was a good work order, then it's not an issue.
Unless we make it an issue.
Well, if it's serving the houses for people who live in them, then it's, it's a done.
But if it's in a subdivision, that's, if it's in, not a road that's being newly created, but in a subdivision that's being newly created, regardless, it is an issue. Period.
I still want to be with Chester to read.
Everything's a difference.
It is.
Well, the problem is you don't have a mechanism, you can't go to the board adjustment, the way it's written now, you can't go to our own board adjustment and say, here are issues and here are what, the road's been here 60 years, it's been used by so many people, it's fine, it's not wrong, but under the subdivision ordinance, it doesn't meet those requirements. I need, you know, a board adjustment decision that says it's fine, I can live with it.
He's working on it.
Right now, the state is involved with a board adjustment.
Chester has a front, pushing something like that.
But if they're not dividing those lots for sale.
For building development.
For building development.
Then that, they don't follow it yet.
But not have that idea, I mean.
Why would you be creating a subdivision?
We're talking about four houses on one piece of land, people are already living there. Four houses on one piece of land.
They were around, they were a month ago.
And you're going to have, well, I hope this property is, very similar, it's got seven houses and probably 25 or 30. And some of them, and I'm, and I'm not talking about this for, because of that, but there are numerous places around like this. And I don't think we ought to make them have to have their road product, their subdivision standards, just because they want to salvage their road.
Do you see any issues with, if you had language in it that said, if this is an existing road?
An existing structure.
Existing travel road.
Then, then do you think, you see any pitfalls for road?
Not really, not if it's serving, if it's serving the property, I guess, doing the job.
Well, it can be a dirt road, lots can be.
I have a place.
Not if people are serving.
Yeah, that's why I said, because they're traveled or served.
There's got to be language in there to say this is not a.
Except logging road, I'm talking about people who have property that's being used.
And it also seems important that the number of houses is not being increased.
Do you?
I look, I mean, I, I want to clarify this because I live in such an area and we bought lots around us, which gives me four, five lots, and our house is in the middle of it in privacy. And this was in subdivision, two different sections of subdivision. And now, then, the county sometime ago put them all back together under one tax bill. So I'm getting billed for three points something acres, even though it's lots in two different subdivisions. I have a 12-foot road turning off the highway, going into my house, then it rises up to 20 foot, then it drops back to 16. We've got four different road lengths. If I were to sell my house out of the middle of that and keep the lots, I'm having a subdivision business again, even though it was subdivided 40 years ago.
Was it recorded 40 years ago?
Nothing was recorded 40 years ago.
Is it on the plat? Did you show the?
Plat, yes.
Yeah, then you would be under subdivision.
Part of it is recorded, of the recorded plat, the, the two lots are off. They're in different individually owned property, we bought from divisions.
But they were different parcels.
It's different parcels also.
So you put them together for tax reasons, so you're not, I think you split those back up, can't you?
No, because she'd be creating a subdivision, she doesn't have subdivision now because she had them being combined.
There's a, there's a, County, Warren County, lots of record, lots, they have lots of record exemption and lots that are recorded in the deed prior to the adoption of their subdivision, to exempt from the standard of their ordinance, it's Warren County. That might be something that would address that.
Using a joint way open through the lots, using washes.
How Jimmy came with the fire code, I mean, how raised did it all this because? Well, they're, they're servicing it now, I mean, if they are serving it, well, if they've had a buyer, they could do.
I think what Susan said, if you were to, you're not increasing the number of houses served by.
If you're not, you're not the house, but if you are, then.
Well, you have to prove that, if, if it's what's there and being used, it would be exempt. If it doesn't. Well, it's maybe not exempt from the subdivision ordinance, but it would be exempt from the road.
Same thing we got in with Terry Dalton, man.
But he was going to be increasing, he was talking about building use now.
Chris tomorrow.
Right, I mean, we're not, we're not talking about, this is, what Morris is trying to say is this is a thing that already exists, that maybe he owns all four houses and then he wants to sell those four houses.
Well, he was saying the same thing, though, that because that he had his subdivision on a preliminary drawing, but it was unrecorded, and he had a, a nice sign out there that advertised the subdivision and the utility being in place, then he should be exempt from the subdivision.
But he didn't have buildings, and that's what we were saying.
I don't think he would be exempt, but I, no, we were going to take a look at that too.
We did pay developments like that.
Chester, I mean, I talked about that.
Yeah. Yeah, there is no, Chester came to the conclusion that you can't, and I can't speak for Chester, but I was under the impression after listening to Chester, that you can't selectively pick out what you're going to exempt from a subdivision.
There was a 30-day period from the time we passed the ordinance, the time we took the faith, that we didn't give the same people an exemption.
Yeah, you can't say, well, I'm going to, everything except the road standards is going to apply to this subdivision.
So, so what we're getting back to, Chris's original motion may need to be amended to include some sort of language about exempting. And then we're going to have to come up with some caboose to that exemption. I guess the basic question that we need to ask ourselves, do we want to exempt anything that's existing and continues to travel?
That's a key word, continues to travel.
I would say something like that, I mean, I don't think you want to do a logging trail, but if it's a, you know, and I don't know how you, what language is well-traveled, you know.
Well, if it's a road that's in use, a regular use.
Right, in regular use.
For the AT, to Chester, but it may make more sense, I think, I think we all kind of agree on the intent, it might not be a bad idea to get Chester to help us word that and then come back.
And the part of our agreement is that it only be consisting of houses.
First, I am getting.
I guess I'll just send that motion.
Which one?
Revised it.
I can't wait to read these amendments.
Max made it, you don't get to make it.
I'm rotting in that.
If you don't make your motion, we're lost because we.
Let's start all over. Say it again, Chris. What, if we're going.
Couldn't that just be amendment, I mean, a motion to amend Chris's motion?
I think that we would need to have the final garbage on what this, what we want to say with the relationship to the road, because this road deal is affecting that. So to me, we need to get definition from Chester, give clarification on how we want to say, write that back and put, and, and the beginning of that motion, we'll need Chris's, what Chris is saying, or is that, is that, okay, with that?
You're going to need, you're going to need Chester to give you this.
So, right, Chris is, we're trying to give a motion.
Well, he's got it rewritten here.
I'm not making motions, I'm not making any.
Just read it, this is the part.
On the plat, newly constructed roads shall be denoted with approximate lifespan, surface, and assumed load.
Got it.
I said newly constructed.
Newly constructed roads, which leaves out any roads that's already there.
Yeah.
Can we go get the well-traveled?
All right, leaves it out if it's. No, no, it leaves it out, so if it's there, you're going to have to bring it to the standard, only new constructed.
That makes a great statement.
Existence.
You know, they're learning. You said that the first time, you're saying it's 25 years. Before he makes a motion, has anybody gotten any comments about that, Chris? Before he makes a motion, has anybody gotten any comments from last day?
I, I'm, that seems really different from what we, that doesn't have the design, that doesn't have the engineer in there, and it doesn't have anything. It seems to me that what that's saying is if there is an existing road, whatever it is, like my ridiculous road that I live on, that I could have a subdivision, build as many houses I wanted, and that road wouldn't have to come up just there. Because that road exists. That's not what he said?
No.
Okay, if that's not what he said, then...
But if they develop the property beyond the use, it's like thorough line...
Right, yeah.
They would have to have roads up to stand in your road.
Right.
They can't, there's no way to go back and fix that way.
No, no, I wasn't saying that, I just didn't think I would be able to have a subdivision.
Let's do this, he's gonna get what you've got, right now, he's gonna get that, and you take that to Chester, make sure that he's okay with what we do this one time, and then maybe y'all communicate if there's, if Chester has any issues, and then he can make the motion again. Is everybody okay with that?
What do you say to him?
Well, I'm sorry.
Is anybody not caring for one more? One, fifty-nine seventy, civil penalty. The language in the central penalty in the ordinance, it quotes, it's vague language, it says, assessment of a civil penalty is the maximum penalty allowed by law. We've done some research, general statute research on civil penalties, so I might bring that back, maybe next month.
Ain't that pretty much the civil penalties are set by a county commissioner, period?
I think it's, I got it, and I can give them out, you look there, and we'll talk about it next week.
We don't set penalties, we don't, but the county commissioner set penalties, but we don't do that.
Sure. Says violation of local ordinances shall be fined not more than five hundred dollars under county statute one six three eight.
So you're saying that means we state it in...
Saying five hundred dollars instead of maximum amount of law. Just a clerical, or a clerical. You said five hundred dollars?
Or that's the maximum. Make five hundred dollars, D. Max?
They just changed that, it was dead.
You want to say... You want to say five hundred dollars?
He said he should change that. I think you leave it the way it is, and I'm talking to the county attorney, and I want to...
Yeah, I mean, I thought the county commissioner set that in. Or pitfully, or... That's what I would, because with the state, it is.
It's legal the way it is, and that county commissioner provides the commissioners and say, what we can do, you guys decide.
You make that form of a motion?
What's the consent?
We can change neither.
We just got to touch it.
Have you had a problem with that?
No, we didn't, if you need to... Everybody okay with playing the law?
Yes.
Good closing, Commissioner Hayden, second counsel.
Doug, good job this evening.
Just trickle my paint, you see, I'm working together. Very impressed.
I'm gonna take out the place, motion to adjourn.
I am, I got, let me see. This I'm handing out is some of Chris's comments. I think Chris was impressed, put through those tonight. The only other comments I had were from Al, referencing community wealth. And we're gonna discuss those if we get time next month, if not, we'll just set him. So everybody knows we're out there, I will send a copy of that out, so everybody aware of it, and this is Chris's.
What was the voluntary agricultural tip?
Yeah, the chairman's.
One quick comment, if you do have anything that you want added to the amendment, this is what Chris's motion is the last drawn, so if you could, go ahead and get those in, because the crime state law will prove that things are pop up, that you see that you want to do yourself. If you have where you can get them on the list, where you can get them on that, you have to, you go ahead. The voluntary act district ordinance is what it says, voluntary ordinance, that we have a existing ordinance named something different, we're changing the name of it, it's going, it's a model ordinance that every county's going to bring, title, same titles, so local level. What it's gonna do too is if you've got crops or cattle, raisin production, minimum acreage of five acres in years past, the county commissioner set a voluntary agriculture district board, they reviewed that ordinance and brought that name down to one acre. And what the benefits are of that is if you sign up for voluntary agriculture district, your land cannot be taken by a new college or recovering jurisdiction without, given domain access without public hearing.
Does it have to be agricultural?
Basically, farmers' rights, it has to be agriculture based, and those laws have changed significantly in the last year. One of the questions that was brought up tonight to commission me was if you signed up for voluntary agriculture district and want to change subdivision, how do I do that? Basically, you write a letter to the voluntary act board, and within thirty days you can be taken out of that voluntary board, there's no tax incentive or anything, and I've got some copies, I can go to you in a minute.
It doesn't pass without...
See, it does, it does pass without.
Okay, when it passes to the next purchaser, do they have that separate?
They do, and they can also get out of it at the same time.
It just takes thirty days to get out, and you're automatically out, essentially, without application?
Are we talking about the thing that you put your land in, you know, the lower tax rates and all that stuff?
The, the ordinance before is farming, basically farmer's rights, if you, stuff like that.
So it would be protecting them from nuisances and that kind of...
Right, if Carl has...
But the other one does.
The advantage is if you're farming, cutting hay at three o'clock in the morning. So that does to do that, so you can't be, any nuisance laws against you.
So when dogs bark, they can't be mowed.
Sell an agriculture.
You got a puppy meal there? I only have a dog, I can't keep up with it.
Motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait, we gotta get a next one.
There you go, Jimmy. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. It's made, I'll let it be.
I think we got one, my person blocked the call, man, so...
That's Miss Chris, you're the caller.
Yes, that's right, you, you guys know me at the county, and, and I live in Diamond Falls. So I'm here to give you the other side of the picture from the, you know, the subdivision owner's perspective, not the developer, but somebody who lives there. First, I wanna thank the county so much, because if it had not been for the subdivision ordinance, and it had not been for the bond, and it had not been for the five people working in the county like Derek and Matt, I think I would really be up the creek without a paddle. But, but we've made a lot of progress, and I have some questions about some of the paving that's been done. But, you know, as far as width goes, you know, I heard you talking about twenty foot width, and I heard fourteen foot width, but I went out and measured my new roads with my little twelve foot tape measure, and it was plenty sufficient. So I have some questions about that, because here's a picture of one road, it's very, very, very steep, going up a really steep grade, and it measured a hundred and thirty-five inches. And I would hate to be going up that road and meet another car. I mean, I don't, not to mention a five truck, but just meet another car, I think I could not back down that road without killing myself. So I wanted to ask about that, but I did just wanna show you the difference between this road, even though it's only a hundred and thirty-five inches, and this next road, which is phase one part of Diamond Falls. If you look at that road, that road is a road that's off this other road, but it happens to be in phase one, not phase two. I had a couple come and visit, and they just dropped in, I didn't know them, had never met them. They bought their lot, they were from Florida, they planned to retire full time up here. They came to visit their lot and were so distressed, because they could not even get to their lot on this road. And so they came by because I was living up there and said, you know, what am I to do, where, what should I do? We were gonna, we were gonna retire up here and build a house and live here full time. So I said, well, are you phase one or phase two? And they're phase one. I didn't know what to tell them. So I just want you to know that I think what you're doing is very important. You can't, I know I hear people say, you know, let the buyer beware, but you go in the grocery store and you assume that the food you buy is gonna be safe. You get on an elevator and you assume that somebody's inspected that. And when you build a house, you know the county's gonna come out and inspect that house. And these people from Florida that are gonna retire here, they can't go and do compaction tests, and they can't inspect the roads, and they have to rely on something. So unless you wanna put a big sign that says caveat emptor up above Highway four forty-one when you drive into the county, I think that what you're doing is exactly the right thing.
Did they not look at the logs and fill the garbage?
They did, but they were told that the road was gonna be paved, and they had bulldozers and equipment out there when they had to sell, and everybody, I was told, and most people were told, we just didn't have time to finish everything. That was almost two years ago.
Shouldn't they have gotten that in writing from the contractor statement, this was gonna be done, have it in writing, so they have some kind of avenue in case the guy didn't do what he was supposed to do?
Well, there were written, there were written statements, written advertisements and written statements that said wide paved roads. You'll still see...
Not an advertisement, I'm talking about a contractor that says, if I get this lot, you're gonna fill in this kind of road.
I know somebody who got, who said, I will not buy in Diamond Falls until I get a performance bond. And they were given a copy of the county bond. This is not an unsophisticated person, this is a building contractor. He's still sitting on unpaid road, his road hadn't been paved yet.
Ms. Alver, I appreciate you bringing those up, the points up, and I think, I think there was something about that moment. And, and you certainly, and you can interface with these gentlemen, and you know the, know the process. Jimmy and Peggy, I would encourage y'all to talk to these two gentlemen about that development, because we don't have enough time to go through the whole history of it, but it is interesting history to see how that developed, was developed, was done, perhaps, what might not, should have been done, could have been done differently.
Well, I'll have to admit, I had that loss of the difference between the first phase and the second phase. Was the first phase not under the ordinance?
Not at all.
That's not it.
Again, thank you very much for sharing.
You're welcome, and thank you for everything that you're doing. I know that you put in long hours and hard work, I just want you to know, it means a lot to a lot of people. It affects, it affects their lives, their retirement and their investment, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further comments, no?